Just stands one nation under God, and it is all, and we're making justice for all.
Let's see, all five of us are here. Okay. Acceptance of minutes, okay, and um the minutes you're saying were kind of written by uh not a, not a full-time
I guess they weren't written by you, Jack.
No, they weren't. As a matter of fact, see, I'm in the process now, I'll pause here, so it's all set. I'm in the process now of checking out all the emails and town to see who insulted whom. So I can, you know, probably nominate somebody. Boy, find out who got insulted, who didn't get insulted, I can't do it. Okay. So acceptance of minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
One second. This is our special. The record meeting.
Oh, September, okay, I can think of what that started with.
Did I nominate him?
For what?
He wants to know if I nominated you to take the minutes. I did, I did nominate you, but I did nominate you for secretary, though.
You're gonna do the minutes?
Okay.
Um, on all the transfers, I'll send you the Excel sheet on the, so all you gotta do, put in them, fill in the motion in a second and a discussion.
Okay.
Yes, we have to. Any uh comments on the minutes? You second it.
I beg your pardon.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, okay. Now, amendments to the agenda, okay? I just want to add, before number nine, a German, make this number nine, move a German down to number ten, okay? And uh I think I, I don't know if I could phrase it, but a cash flow discussion on pending spending.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, okay. Um, audience of citizens? Anybody?
Amy Saris, one twenty Freeman Road. I just have a question regarding um a comment that was made at the Board of Select meeting, well, oh, question, um regarding the grant for Rig Street. Um, at the meeting on Wednesday night last week, uh, Mr. Temple mentioned that there was a two million dollar grant. And I believe it was only two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or approximately in that range, that the um town was ream- or seeking reimbursement. I just wanted to get clarification, was there, is there a two hundred million dollar bridge grant, or?
Is it two million dollar, or two hundred million dollar? Maybe you're confusing that with a uh, a bridge loan, I never forget.
Um, in the initial estimates, it was gonna be two million dollars that we submitted to FEMA for the replacement of the Rig Street Bridge. Um, it came in at two hun- the total cost was two hundred and eighty-seven because between Nefus and Young, the town engineer, Wayne Watt, and um the people at Brennan Construction, they came up with a unique way of salvaging the old bridge instead of having to rip it down and build a new bridge.
Okay, so
Two, two million dollar estimate came in at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, so there's not a, there's not a grant that we're getting?
We're gonna kind of discuss that.
That, that bridge will be paid for a hundred percent by the Federal Department of uh, Federal Highway Administration.
Right, right, okay.
But we, but he did mention trying to get a bridge loan.
Yes.
Bridge loan, which is really
Yes, that's different, right, right.
That's really a bridge loan, I'll tell you.
Yep.
Like uh, two hundred million or, or, but whatever number he had there to try to get that, I don't know if that pie in the sky or what, I have no idea. All right, anybody else in the audience? Anybody? Okay. All right. Old business, now you're confusing me, old business. There are items in some of the previous meetings that we tabled. Shouldn't that have come back at us as, as being old business?
If it was tabled, yes, it should've.
They're not.
But I, I didn't have the minutes, so I couldn't go back. I looked at the December twenty-third minutes, there was nothing there.
Even before that. This practice has been going on for quite a while, and it's dawned on me that uh, sometimes we, we, we don't, we, we said no to some spending, and then we never know what happened to it.
Well, if you say no to it, it's a dead issue. Well, usually you say no to it because if you don't take action and you table it, it passes automatically after sixty days, so for the last, since the last charter revision, for the most part, you'll deny and send it back to the Board of Select.
We did, but there's, there's some some, some, that'd be some old business, or thing that was just sent back or sent back to the, anything, okay? If there is, there is no
No, the specific
I know, because there's no minutes, we can't, the minutes we had were, was actually were very good at that time. So, okay.
So, I think the only thing that I can recall, and I don't remember if we denied it or if we had tabled it, was the ninety-eight, ninety thousand dollars for uh, the wa- was it the electrical wiring?
Why, the seventy-five thousand dollars?
No, I thought there was some like ninety thousand dollar item.
Is that the one for the e-commerce?
For engineering, and we either tabled it or denied it, and
Protestantry over
This was months ago.
It was the engineering
The engineer, nine thousand, right.
And it has not, you denied it, and it has not been approved, has not been paid.
Okay, that's the only thing I remember.
All right. Seventy-five thousand got paid because that was the, called an emergency. All right. Okay. New business. So yeah, how many pages of transfers do we have?
That's not bad for the end of the year.
Okay. Wow. All right. All right. I guess first we'll take on this uh, fifteen thousand for a senior transit van. Now, this is a current year expenditure. So, you could also use the contingency fund if we had to.
For the purposes of this for discussion, I'll make a motion to approve uh, the fifteen thousand dollars as presented.
Second.
All right. Okay, let me see.
I have a little logistics question. Um, so in here, it was noted that it was from the gen- the general fund, is that, but we could decide to take it?
We, we decide that, they don't decide that. At the meetings, they, they talk away, but we decided it's gonna be, come out of the contingency, the general fund, or just create, or deny it.
Okay. Okay.
Could um, could we just get an explanation of what the item is, uh, Jack, or Jim?
Sandy, Sandy's here, she can explain it, and then I, something on the logistics and the timing or the word up on.
So, we uh, put in for
Your name and
Oh, Sandy Arbor, Senior Center Director, twenty-one Rolling Hills Drive, Oxford, Connecticut. Um, so we had uh, put in for a five-three-one-oh, and we had chosen minivan because it definitely what we were looking for for the future. Our vans are aging, one of them is a twenty-ten with almost ninety thousand miles, the other one is a two thousand seventeen with about thirty thousand miles. And then we just replaced our car, which kind of was um, aged out, and we use as a backup car now. We've had approximately eight to nine new riders in the past month. Um, so our ridership and our requests are increasing greatly. And uh, there's no other transit in town, so we have no paratransit, we have no valley transit, so um, any citizen looking to take, you know, take part in our transportation, if you're sixty and over or disabled, you're gonna be looking at Ubers, or ambulances, or taxis, and it's not a safe nor economical, you know, option for people, so that's why we put in for the minivan.
So this would be, I mean, how, this would be every day, this, this van going in and?
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, will you, how many do you currently have?
Uh, we have two vans, a twelve passenger and a twenty passenger, and then a car, we have a four-four.
So, did this, did this put add to it, or would you get rid of one?
Um, we're adding, and we're hoping not to get rid of one because they're getting very old.
Well, you used to have four also.
What's that?
Used to have four.
Yeah, there was an accident prior to my employment, and uh, they had to, they had to deem it inoperable.
What are some of the examples of use for the vans, what are some of the requests that you are able to support right now?
Um, all med- a lot of medicals, you know, a lot of medicals, people with physical therapy, people with chemotherapy, dialysis. We do have four disabled adults that we take to school, um, daily that don't have any other options. Their parents work full-time, and they're unable to get them to and from work, so we usually take them to or from, we take them one way. And then we have a lot of people who use the transportation for our senior center, so we bus people back and forth to the senior center, um, to prevent social isolation, um, get them some social stimulation.
Just a brand-new van? A brand-new van?
Yes.
What is it, a twenty-twenty-four?
Um, it's gonna be a twenty-twenty-five, so it's supposed to be delivered in early spring or summer, I guess it's, it's kind of up in the air when we're actually gonna get it, and we opted for a minivan, and you can take seats out of it, so it does have a wheelchair lift, but it can be for people to wheelchair, so it does have options.
The make is what? I think that's who's asking. Was it a Ford?
The make of it, it's gonna be procured from the state of chemistry.
Yeah, what's, what make is it?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure yet, no.
How many drivers do you have?
We have four.
Oh, you do have four drivers, okay.
So we have four drivers and currently three vehicles, so someone's always out of work.
So it runs four days a week, how many hours?
Um, usually
All four, usually?
Nine to four.
Nine to four?
Yeah, about seven hours a day.
And uh, you go anywhere, you go anywhere?
Uh, yes, and that's the other thing is, you know, people have doctor's appointments in Haven or Haven, because we don't have any paratransit to bring people any further, we, we don't, we want people to be able to get to where they need to go, and to their doctors and chemo, and the Veterans Hospital and everything, so we do take them outer limits.
And talking this topic about transportation, there is no
Do the drivers just wait there, let's say somebody has a chemo treatment, you know, are they waiting there for the person to finish?
Yeah, it depends, if they're bringing them to New Haven, it doesn't make sense to drive back and forth with the pricey gas and the wear and tear on the vehicle, so they do stay there, so then we lose a driver for the whole day.
So all four drivers, or three drivers, because you have three vehicles, are all working at the same time, nine to four every day? And you're always occupied, bringing somebody somewhere?
Generally, there's some downtime sometime, but generally they're always busy.
Right, the four drivers are all part-time, so they can't work more than nineteen hours a week, so you're talking a total of seventy-six hours a week.
Okay, are these fixed routes every day? No, they're not, so they change the, by, of quality yet?
Correct, and we are looking at doing, looking at doing a fixed route with Crestview, um, kind of looking at the transportation, because we're back and forth there all day. Um, so we're looking at some fixed routes, just back and forth to Crestview as a senior center.
Anybody else? Anybody? It's the only, it's the only way, it's the only way people get around, get to the doctors, get to the grocery shop, and get anywhere.
My only question, I was gonna talk about the logistics, is Sandy said it's gonna be delivered in the spring or in the summer. We don't know yet whether it's gonna be this fiscal year or next fiscal year.
Why do you have to wait, I mean, because why can't you just go to the, the lot and buy a main vehicle?
Um, it, it kind of things changed during COVID, um, this is the first year they're doing the grant again.
Same, that mean?
Yes, two thousand and nineteen was the last rotation, and those vehicles just got delivered, I think, last year, so this was the first option. They didn't even think they were gonna be open for the five-three-one-oh, but they did open the um, the placement for it, so it's usually, you, you request it, and you put in the application for it, and do the grant, and then it's delivered a year later. And we are one of, I think, fifty, we're sixteen towns of fifty towns that put in for this grant that were awarded it, so.
So if the fifteen thousand, that has, we don't have to have that now?
We're not, we're not really sure, if, if it's gonna be this budget season or next budget season.
So, as long as you have the board's concurrence, because you're all gonna be on the board next year, once the van's gonna be delivered, whether we know it's gonna come in in May, and we put it on an April agenda to get approved, or whether it's gonna be July, and
So I'm just saying with the fifteen thousand right now, we can, we can uh we can appropriate it, we could, we could approve the fifteen thousand, but we will not fund any of it as of now.
So what are we funding, I'm a little confused.
It's a seventy-five thousand dollar van, uh, the town's portion of the fifteen thousand.
Okay.
So the state will pay
Sixty.
Is it ninety thousand, the state will pay seventy-five, we'll pay fifteen, or is it seventy-five, sixty?
It's uh, seven, so it's sixty for the, the state, and then we would have to pay the fifteen, so it's estimated though right now, because it's kind of, you know, six, seven months out, so it's just an estimate right now. And there are two procurement classes that we have to, I have to go to, um, with Karen Cook, our grant writer, and is gonna tell us how we're gonna go about getting the van. Um, those are in December and in February.
So this is, this is way in advance here.
Yes.
We could have said we approved the idea, but right now we'll, we'll hold off doing any appropriation, any funding. Because otherwise, if we needed it now, we'd have taken it on, could take it out of contingency because this year's contingency.
That's where, that's where I was a little confused, like, what are we talking about tonight if we're not approving the funding?
Just because
Just because we're
Basically get everybody's approval, and then come back in May, and Sandy gets the van, that people don't come back in May and say, I didn't know anything about it, I don't want to approve.
Yeah, how do we, how do we write that, to say, well, we just don't want the, we approved the concept, and uh, you know, coming back with fifteen thousand, we can always, we can take care of that, yeah. All right.
We don't have to say we're going to confirm.
Not yet. Not yet. So, so I make a motion to all right, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Make a commitment.
Make a motion, we approve the funding for the van, uh, as far as the payment, that's to be determined later, about we approve the fifteen thousand dollar concept.
Second.
Yeah, my second, that one. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. All right. I have one question for you. Word Finance is interested in touring the senior center. Okay. Can I call, and then, that's gotta be convenient for the six of us and yourself, okay?
Absolutely.
I'll be right there.
We're using hot dog days to
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday morning.
Thanksgiving. I was like, wait a minute, we're not there.
Well, now, I'll call you, and we'll set up a date, okay? All right. Because some of these people actually have never seen the senior center.
I think a lot of people have never seen it, I would love people to come up and tour the senior center.
Five years, I'll be old enough to go.
It was there last week.
You're gonna be there again.
Yeah.
I spent, I spent a lot of time up there when Haney was first, when he was uh, the selectman, trying to get all the repairs up there. It's a lot of, a lot of time to repair.
There's a lot of wear and tear.
Floor, on the floors.
I'll give you a tour, and I'll, I'll point out all the areas for any improvements.
All right, so we'll, we'll look, see what I can, what kind of date I could set up, okay?
Okay.
All righty. All right. Starting on these um, transfers. Okay, here's my, here's my little question here. It's now, the next, a week from today is December. We're going to transfers for, this is as of June two thousand and twenty-four. That's a little long. That's a little long, that's a little too long, okay? This is, this is good, all right. At least we got some kind of mechanism here, private industry, we'd all be out in the street. Okay, so what do we got here, first one, assessor. The key is careful, it's all within the department, if it comes out of the department, then we gotta watch it.
Except for numbers thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and forty, they all come within the department.
Okay. So the first one's the assessor, that's because you didn't have certain people there at a certain time?
The way, that clerk was vacant, so we put other people from thirty-two hours a week to forty hours a week.
Okay, so that uh okay, you, you say, still with the vacant, you also didn't use any OT?
Um, a little bit of OT, but not much, because the way the, the union contract is worded, it's um forty hours a week or eight hours a day, so we just put them up to five, five-eight hour days. So they were working an extra day, but it's straight time.
By the way, this is just cleaning up our
So I don't understand this, so twenty-three, twenty-four, so this is to talk about prior year's finances?
We haven't closed a year yet.
Normally, we close a year in the beginning of September.
Yeah.
But this year, because of the flood, I've been doing nothing but flood work for the last ninety to one hundred and twenty days. And so I just had to jump back on this because the auditors are coming in in the beginning of January.
So you're just moving money around to balance things out?
Yeah, well, here's the thing. Some, sometimes I agree with this, and sometimes I don't. What this is saying is it's moving it to the line where it, it is minus and plus, it kind of screws up your budgeting. Because it's, it's gonna, you're gonna throw your budgeting out of whack, okay? That's what it does, otherwise we could just leave it, let it sit in the budget as is. And say, here, we overran these accounts, but we're under on these accounts, if it stays in that department. Okay, we're doing this, we always do that as a cleanup. But then, when we get the report from the auditor, you'll see original budget and adjusted budget, this will be the adjusted budget.
So it's just my, it's just my, I mean, I don't know, understand the past practices, I get rebounds and things, but why wouldn't you want what's realistic? We were over budgeting these lines, we were under budgeting here, so that going forward, you can properly budget line items.
Yes, well, you could do that, when the, when the auditor gives us this report, you'll have the original budget, and you can match that up against the actual spending. And then you'll have how we adjusted it here against that too. I, I tend to agree with you. I tend to agree with you that we should leave it as this, and say, here, this is where we, we went over in all these accounts, and here's where we went wrong. And then we would know that better when we budget.
I have to look at all three. Looking at all three does the same thing, though.
It does, as long as, as long as you pay attention to it, yeah. You know what I mean? But what we load, what we load in all our history and everything is the original budget, okay? If you ask me for now, for the last year's amended budget, I'd have to go back to the, to the annual report to get it.
So like, if we have a wages clerk next year, we're gonna think, oh, wow, you know, the, the line item was correct, but we were actually over budgeted by eighty-seven hundred dollars, but
So the best thing to do is just, the auditor's report with the, with the both columns, is to just work off of that, and that'll avoid confusion. It cleans up our reports too, it, it does clean it up, as long as we stay within the department, now we come out of that department. Basically, if we come out of that department and we go past, past that department, we should have to have a, a town being to move it, okay? Because it went over, it's, it's over our budget. But within the department, we don't have to worry. All right, the first one here is the wages, so that, anybody got any motion on this?
Motion to approve. Second.
So, just so I understand, so we actually are gonna do the, the moving around, we're not gonna do it as is?
This'll, this'll be the second line from the auditor's report, when the auditor gets this, he's got something to work with. All right?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, you'll have, still have the history, you'll have the history, and you'll have this too, you'll have all three, the history, the amended, and the actual.
Who needs the motion?
I do.
Sue and Nikki? Okay.
And uh, any discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ambulance, putting at least telephones, I guess we were way under in that telephone.
Well, they came in for a transfer earlier in the year for the tran- for the telephone, they didn't need all that they came in for.
Okay.
And then at the end of the year in June, the um uh, keys, the FOBD system failed and was not repairable, they had to put a new FOB system in.
At the
At the ambulance. Ambulance has had there for quite a lot of fire, got there four, five years ago.
Okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. On the favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see, so, a bottle of water. Okay, let me, let me wash up to this thing.
Motion to approve.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dog ward. Doctor maintenance, okay, I guess we did do something there.
They were gonna epoxy the floors in there, and they never got to it.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just out of curiosity, did that floor get, uh, any water in it during the flood?
No.
No.
Ambulance did, uh, but not that much, but fire had about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of damage in their building.
Okay. Dog ward, from wages to electricity. I know we use electricity, wages, we, we really have, what, any part-timer there now?
No, she's a full-timer, she wasn't, she wasn't there for the whole year.
Okay.
You had, um, oh, what's his name, um, Jason McLean that moved up to public court, but then they didn't, Adrian didn't come in in July one.
Okay. So again, when you budget, that could throw you out of whack, you gotta go back to the original. We'll have them though, we'll have those numbers. All right. On the favor?
Aye.
All right, economic development, what's this? Let's see, mileage. Okay, economic development, advertising to mileage, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Anybody? Make a motion, okay.
Right. I'll second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So everything's coming out, and you didn't have, this is the senior center. You didn't have, we didn't have assistant director in there for quite a while, we still, we got one now?
We got one now, but you didn't, she didn't start down there until probably last, was vacant all of last year, and she probably started in September of this year.
God, I don't even know, a little bit before that.
Yeah, but it was this current year, so it was vacant right through June thirtieth.
So you've been by yourself with no, nobody else for all that time?
So even, Jim, even with the movement of the monies like this, this nine thousand, is it still, like, you just use wherever you need it out of the, the wages assistant director, there's still probably money that's in there, right?
Yeah, we took uh, between the two transfers, uh, nineteen thousand dollars out of there.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again. Elderly, again, from wages, assistant director. Okay, the vehicle repairs, vehicle maintenance, wow. I guess the, the vehicles are getting old.
Yeah.
Okay, physical exams, I could tell you, so is that because just unusual repairs and
They're, they're getting old, and Sandy said she just got a uh, a different Taurus, it's not even a new one, it's a used one, uh, the old Taurus would cost, to have it capable of transporting seniors on an everyday basis wasn't feasible.
I just have a simple question, there's two transfers, but each one comes from the same from account, why not one transfer?
I, I uh, tried to put the ones that were utility based, so that the senior center had no choice over, um, the um, the cost of the heat, the facility maintenance, the HVAC, waste removal, I tried to group those together. And then the ones where we might have had a choice, like, we didn't have a choice, we had to give the physicals to the bus drivers.
Okay.
We had to repair the buses, but they weren't mandated by the DPUC or something.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to motion on second?
I did.
And Nikki did.
Okay. Emergency communications. From, uh, Next Gen to telephone.
This was because of switching over the fire department from all the repeater systems in town, uh, transmitting the fire, uh, basically the fire ground operations and the dispatches, they're dedicated copper piers that go from location to location. Um, switching over to fiber optics, and a lot of this was the equipment to switch over to fiber optics. Won't be any cheaper being on the fiber, it might should be a little bit more expensive, but it'll be a lot more reliable.
This is, uh, what, right there?
Yep.
Right there, okay.
All motion approved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All of it, approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, finance. Finance because audit, that came up, pardon?
Uh, no, what happened, we get three audits each year, we get the town audit, we got a state of Connecticut audit, single audit, and we got a federal single audit. Uh, usually the town will pay for the town audit, or fifty percent of the town audit. Um, and then the state audit is usually paid for by the, um, town, and the federal is paid for by the board of ed, because they get all the HUD funding. This year, because of having ARPA funding, we got more money on the town from the federal government than the Board of Education did. And so we've always had a standing rule, whoever gets more revenue pays the bill. Uh, and, um, I got stuck with the bill this year.
We had it in?
What's that?
We had that, in the financing cost?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, because we didn't do any, uh, we only did two bond resolutions for legal costs last year, I didn't do any ARPA ones.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is the fire department, and I could tell you that this is like an annual event, that they pay for everything they can for vehicle maintenance in their budget. And if they run short at the end of the year, we've always tried to keep an allowance in that contingency, because a fire truck has to move, has to be on the road, and has to be a hundred percent. Oh, let's see here. Maintenance.
It seems like everybody under budget for heat, so far.
And that was because, uh, when we had the COVID shutdown, I had bought a couple years of oil futures, and I believe at a dollar fifty a gallon when it was real cheap. Uh, but then those futures got used up, and now we're paying, uh, like, two eighty or some, something in that area.
So the vehicle repair, that's not one vehicle, it's a whole, whole, most of vehicles that went over his vehicle repair budget?
Right, and the difference between vehicle repairs and maintenance is a repair is something that breaks down. So you get the letters in the mail, they took something in for a repair, um, an oil change, but then they discovered this was broken and that was broken. So that would be the repairs, the maintenance is the oil change itself.
It looks amazing, it's just a change of bulb and everything. Every, you guys get the bills very expensive. I mean, it's expensive, it's fifteen hundred dollars just to get in and change a bulb. I guess it's a captive market. Okay, anybody wanna make a motion on this one? Any questions on it?
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion?
Okay.
Any questions on this one? Computer hardware, just, did we buy, buy that, somebody a computer there?
Don't, don't really know. I know we did buy a server for the Quakers Farm, but whether that's what caused the over time on that.
Alright. So all in favor?
Aye.
Fire marshal. The hardware telephone is, I don't even feel that all covered.
No.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on this? All in favor?
No.
Library.
That was her union contract settlement.
The directors in the union?
Uh, she's in the supervisor's union, and they got, they're, they're two and a half years that they went, they went without a contract, so there was two to three, two increases plus the retro.
What's the, what's the current salary for the library administrator?
Uh, like, somewhere in the area of eighty thousand. I can look it up if you want.
Well, obviously, we can't, we can't, we can't knock on the wage.
Contractual.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Telephone wasteful, not that just...
Motion to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, parks.
This was the, uh, minimum wage increase. I think it was the weight, minimum wage was like thirteen dollars, and it went up to fifteen, uh, and for all the summer counselors and all, and the lifeguards, um, and at the, uh, school pool, the lifeguards.
We talked about that, actually, Karen.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on this? Again, the wages season, that's all the lifeguards and everything, right? That's just not that anybody else in, in, uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, here's the break. Same deal?
Same, same union contract.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second?
What's that salary?
It's, again, I think she did make in like seventy-five or so, but I, if you want to get a contract, then we'll get it.
And how come this was held up two and a half years? They wouldn't agree?
Correct. At least it's the same wage rate, and it's going to buy a new arbitration.
Well, everybody's on strike now. I thought every company you could think was on strike. Even the people who clean airplanes now, the inside of airplanes are on strike. Okay, we have no choice on that one, so make, make a motion, anybody?
Which one are we?
The, uh, wages for the...
I thought we did that.
Sue and Paula Paul.
Okay. Alright. Planning and zoning.
What, all, all involved on it?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Figure some wage man.
The planning and zoning, one type online here where it says it should be two on the first line, two on the second line. So where it's wage enforcement, and also the secretary was short seventy-one dollars in her budget. But I, I typed it, I put from, it was...
Okay, it's two.
Where? This one should be a two? Oh, oh, I see. I've been talking about the number.
Was that a salary, or is that a, uh, a contract thing again?
Uh, the enforcement officer is the same union contract.
He's supervisor?
The secretary has extra hours when they have the meetings.
He's supervisor?
Yeah, he's in the supervisor's union.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Legal services, planning and zoning, regulation updates. Who does it?
Um, they have the attorney for their meetings, um, I think it's McCsherry.
Kevin. Yeah, McCsherry.
Okay, you need a motion, someone?
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Wait.
I don't have a discussion for the next one.
So, I have a question, just because, you know, regulation updates?
They didn't, they didn't do them.
They didn't do the regulation.
This is, okay.
But I think what Jim just said was it's for Kevin, who shared it, the attorney, and he goes to all the beginnings. So...
So, are we up to date over there?
No, yeah.
Yeah? That's where our buddies AI would come in.
Yeah, I know.
That, that's just, that's just waiting for AI. Okay, police, all over the way. Now. So I make a motion.
Uh, for, I'll make a motion for discussion purposes.
Second?
Well, make a motion, we'll discuss.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
And then we say, so she can second it, and if we wanna, but understand wages. Okay, a hundred and eighteen thousand, now. This overtime and police wages. Is, is that the, the money you put through for, let's say, private work, that we are, we are pulling money backs in to the town?
No, this is for regular shift patrolmen to meet the minimum, minimum manning requirements for any special investigations they have.
And this didn't blow over the department, our budget?
No, because we had a vacancy for almost the whole year. Actually, one part of the year, we had two vacancies, and we had somebody on workers' comp for, uh, might have been a whole year.
And this was also part of the, uh, coverage for that, those vacancies, that actually, that police picked up extra shifts?
Right, or somebody that calls in sick, and we gotta bring somebody in to, uh, fill in for them.
But then they would get sick pay.
That's it?
The sick pay's still going out, right?
They haven't gotten increased since twenty-one, I think. I think their contract expired June of twenty-two. So you're gonna see some big numbers for retro, aren't you?
So, a logistics question. So this will close out that, so there's not gonna, there will be no other transfer requests for this, this full year? Well, I mean, like, for police, for example, like, is this?
Correct, I was just looking, because there's four, four items that didn't go between departments, I was just looking to make sure police wasn't one of those before I answered your question.
This is all to June two thousand twenty-four, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, it's going into that past year.
Right, well, yeah, what I was just meaning is that, like, there's not, like, that's it, like, there's not?
Well, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay.
But the overtime, again, it's hard to see, the a hundred and eighteen thousand, so we, we had no pay for three people. That, that allowed us to have the...
Two people.
Two people. We had, it allowed us to stay within the budget. But if we were over the overtime budget and we had a normal workforce, then we'd be...
Right, but if you had those two people, you wouldn't have had that much overtime, you know?
The, the state, you guys aren't on the, uh, the family leave, right?
No.
But even with that overtime, we had enough coverage in town, right?
If we don't, it goes to, uh, item number twenty, which is the state police overtime. If they can't get it from, uh, one of the local officers, then they, they call the barracks and the state police send somebody down.
So if we had, so if this overtime was to cover essentially the, 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 the officers who, uh, were absent, you know, for whatever reason, do they equal out? Like...
This year, they did. Most years, they don't, that's what Jack was just talking about, we've had in the past where this, they came in there for a half a million dollars at the end of the year.
Oh, it used to be some blood on the floor, but you know what? Way, way back. It'd be way, way back with the police, we didn't have two people on the shift, and a lot of times, we didn't have a shift cover. And if you wanted a policeman, you had to call, you had to call to check this out there. So this is come a, kind of a long way to what we used to have. Right? You have to get, you were, you were at the, so if you had a little, if you had two things going at once here in town years ago, you were... I don't know what they did, you get, uh, help wherever you can get it.
I can tell you, my house was a frequent flyer for the last several years, and I'm sure glad they didn't have to wait, um, twenty minutes to bring somebody down from up in Roxbury or something.
Okay, the police second, uh, was it, do we, uh, second overtime, everybody, all in favor?
Who was the second on that?
Uh, Sue. I did the first, and Sue did the second.
Sue, okay.
Okay, next thing, we're still the state police overtime. That's in your con, that's in your, your billing from the state?
Right.
Did you get that billing filed for last year?
Sure did.
Why are there?
No, it was, it came in under budget.
Oh, it came in under budget.
Why are there two different wage accounts?
The wage account for us...
So the forty-three versus the fifty-eight?
You're, you're coding.
Get the damn... Both of them should be fifty-eight, if you got a page, it was nineteen and twenty, it was just a cut and paste error.
Okay, so then, uh, item nineteen should be five-one-five dash five-eight?
Five-eight, right.
Again, this...
Motion to approve.
Okay, this, we're talking about the other state police. That's the monies that we pay against the contract. We don't pay directly to the state, we pay to the state?
Pay to the state of Connecticut, around their payroll.
Sue, you make a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vehicle maintenance.
While he's looking that up, I'm just curious, so if I'm adding up those four police wages, it's like one seventy, one eighty-two, like, almost a hundred and ninety thou, one eighty-five to one ninety? How many officers is a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
Two and a quarter.
Okay.
Figure about seventy-five thousand each, so maybe two, yeah, two and a quarter, two and a half.
Okay, vehicle maintenance, from police wages, again, that police wages is a common.
Yep.
Okay, so vehicle maintenance, fifty-two thousand, is that a, a year's accumulation, or what is it?
That was a year's accumulation, um...
We, we didn't go through that account all year, we must have bled it out, well, we budgeted.
We had several cars that needed new engines, um, the Dodge Chargers were, um...
I thought those were pretty new cars, that...
There was a five-year, there was a five-year lease purchase, and they were paid off already, so now they're probably six years old, seven years old.
Yeah, that, at least, we always, you know, discussed that one, got the lease, the cars, and then, now, ARPA bought cars, too.
ARPA bought some cars for them, and, um, three of, three cars got destroyed in the flood, so I'm still arguing with the insurance company on the value, because they just wanna pay me...
Book value.
Book value, and it's like, no, we have seventy thousand dollars of improvements we made to the vehicle.
Got the ra, you got the radios and that, and everything?
Yeah, but that's what my argument with them is going back and forth now.
So, let me, so what's here with the vehicle maintenance? Is that the three that are, that are old or no good, or need a new motor?
We still had some of them.
Why, why fix it?
Uh, because they had nothing else to, well, the big repairs were on the Dodge Chargers. But you're right, on the, like, the Crown Vix that went, they did not fix it.
Okay.
I'm just curious about the vehicles, so you replaced a couple engines, is that just because of idling? Because how many high-speed chases that are taxiing or engines evaporate, are there?
It's, it's the idling, and what I'm told by the police department, and I don't pretend to know their job, they can't turn the vehicles off when they're on duty, because that turns the computers off, and then it takes a minute or so to reboot when they're, like, to start the car up to go for a response, they can't wait a minute to... So if you go by the police station, you're gonna see the cars out there with the lights on, sitting there running, even though they're inside. It's not so they get into a car with air conditioning or heat on it, it's...
It's fifty-two, they have been repaired.
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Police? That's gotta be in the police wages account. Four thousand.
Yeah, it was.
Books, hardware, medical, supplies, water, I don't know. So I'll make a motion here? I make a motion, okay. You second? Okay. Um... It stays within the department, I guess, I, I gotta... It stays within the department, I guess, I, I gotta, I gotta remind myself to go home and look at that wages account. Okay. Yeah, all in favor? Again, please, education, computer hardware, the software. That's, uh-
Scheduling?
Software?
They bought us scheduling software. Uh, which actually works out very well for us, because now we have the handwritten time sheets from the officer and then we have the computer generated that they have to log in. We find quite a few, uh, discrepancies. I was very against buying that software, but I can tell you it's paid for itself over and over again.
So like, you start a shift and you log in, or you log in, like, how does it work?
You have to log in from the computer in the police station.
Okay.
Wait, does that mean make a, make a motion on this thing?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you, Spicky, second, okay, now. Seems to me, it seems to me, we bought scheduling software a couple of years back, okay? And it seems to me, they couldn't get it off the ground. They didn't schedule, they thought it was, it was great, down they don't have to do this and that, and guess, within six months it wasn't used anymore. Okay, so this had to be, this had to be different software?
I don't remember the first one.
I do.
I know, I can tell you, I was against this and I fought for it, fought against it, fought against it and, uh, I'll admit they were right.
They were right, the, the schedule is good, I, I, we, we approved this a long time ago. I'd have to go way back, remember?
There was something, but it may not, there may have been a second part, they purchased maybe one part and they didn't wanna use the part, that's where they had to actually keep track of themselves, that detail.
Yeah, but we paid a good money for that software too.
But they were, they were against it, we initially, but this may be different or an upgraded version possibly.
I don't know, that I don't, we'll, we'll find out, but I can tell you, is, is there any guarantee that this stuff gets implemented? You, you say it's working fine?
It's working good.
Sure don't, I can tell you, just, I can tell you, this, they don't have a good track record. We bought the, uh, Taser's, the set, the closet, we bought the, uh, uh, what else did we buy, the, 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 oh-
Cameras.
Cameras, that's, they'll set in the closet, they'll-
I give you, exactly, I hear Paul on the phone, um, every week, it might be, hey, the scheduling software showing that Officer X, I'm making this up now, just giving you an example, Officer X was sick on, um, Friday, but on his timesheet it's showing that he worked. And then they go back, no, he was sick, he's, cause on the timesheet it's fill it in.
Okay, so-
I have a question about this, is this a subscription or is this, was this a one-time?
No, it's an annual, it's in their budget for this year.
Okay.
And education, what didn't they do for education?
They're doing it, but, um, Sergeant Cipriano was doing most of the training, uh, whereas before they used to go out, we'd pay the state police to do the training. What's that?
I'm trying to explain that he does do the training.
Cipriano does most of the training.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Overtime, public works for snowplowing, that must, must be a whole good account in that snowplowing. Okay, anybody, uh-
Well, just say, the snowplowing is the extra drivers, not the public works employees, but the extra drivers get brought in. I think there's two or three on, uh, each storm.
Could we get a first and a second or something?
I, I, I made a motion to approve, it's, it's for snowplowing, other budgets exist.
Okay, before you do that, uh, I just noticed, the account number is the same for police wages, on the same page above.
Oh, shit, okay.
Excuse me. It should be five-four-five-five, five-two-one, one thousand.
So-
On the first line, five-four-five-five, five-two-one, one thousand. And the second line should be five-four-five-five, five-one-five, six-nine.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
And the details, it's correct, but on the summary sheet it's-
On the summary, I was just doing copy and paste, so it's just a-
Sorry. I'm just using now because it's easy to-
Right.
Uh, Sue, you, who does the second?
I make a motion, yes, I want a second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm ready to. Even Sue the word puts so long. Overtime, public works, that's, that's his last overtime, last year's?
This year, you and I looked at it a few weeks ago, they're, they don't have, they don't have much left.
No, okay, so. Hey, make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the overdues in public works, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I have a question about the next time, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
What is single stream?
It's on the, uh, recycling, where we don't have to separate paper from plastic and, uh, they just bring the whole recycling bin down.
What is the wages additional line?
There's one person that works a, is assigned to recycling, um, and he works a Tuesday through Saturday schedule. So when they're open on Wednesday and they're open on Saturday, on Saturday, he's not getting the overtime. Um, he's getting strict time. There has to be two people there recycling, and so one of the employees comes from public works department, who's a Monday through Friday employee, um, so on Saturday, on Wednesday afternoon, his wages, his strict time wages are charged for recycling. And that's the additional.
So we're on public works, and it's, the from is seven thousand five hundred seventy-two, ten?
Uh, no, we already did that.
We did that, okay, I just wanna make sure, I'm, I'm, okay, now, recycling, okay. And I can tell you that, uh, since I use that a lot, it's not, I have not seen as much usage as I had a couple of years ago. It seems like it, it's not being used as much. It's a great asset to the town, I think, I use it a lot, but, uh, and I'd, I'd seen it, but you still need the two guys out there, when they're really busy.
The tonnage is still up, but it seems like the people are getting in and out quicker, I don't know what it is, but you're right, you're not waiting in line out to the street.
What's the, um, what's the argument for not charging commercial, uh, pe, commercial contractors to dump their stuff there?
Commercial should be dumping there.
Okay, then, what's the, what's the argument against charging people for it, see more charges, other people charge?
We could, just to be a, for what you're gonna collect, the whole budget up there, say it's a quarter of a million dollars, you're gonna need, um, at least one additional person that's gonna be selling the tickets, somebody that's gonna be collecting it. Um, it becomes a cost benefit, you, so you spend a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in additional labor to collect seventy-five thousand fees.
Okay, well, in Derby, what they do is, you wait on the way in, and you're, when they go, when you go out with that ticket, you wait on the way out and then you pay on the, you pay on the difference. That's what they do, so you only have, gotta have one person or either side. Thing that gets me is in contractors, if you, but, I've been there, where one vehicle filled up a whole dumpster. And that ain't right, cause you, this guy took down a porch or something, it ain't right, you know what I mean? And that is, that looked like it was a contractor doing that. So, it, it's hard, it's hard to have force all these reform rules. Cause people drive all the way up from Florida just to use our, our recycling center. They drive up, all the way up from Florida, I see all these Florida marker players, and I said, wow, imagine that. Okay, anything else on this?
I have a motion on that from Brett, I won't have a second.
Nikki.
Any discussion, anybody, all in favor?
There's gonna be another recycling later on, where it's gonna be taking, uh, money out of public works, moving it over.
Okay. This is the registrar, okay, and did, well, so I make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so, what's, what's the deal there in, now, in-
Early voting, just getting ready, carrying up for the early voting.
Linda's still there, is she?
Linda's still on the payroll, um, actually, I don't even know if she's on the payroll, she's, she's still the registrar, um, but she hasn't been back to work yet.
Okay, but she is the official registrar, she's loaded that job.
Yep.
So.
And I understand she's doing very well.
Good, so, good for her, but on, on the wages, uh, how we handle that, we have an extra wage in there now?
Um, that'll hit us this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's-
Well, it's gonna be more hours, cause it's the deputies that are doing it.
There's no, uh, sick wages or sick time?
Actually, part-time.
Huh?
Part-time.
Okay.
So which referendum are we talking about, cause if this is twenty-three, twenty-four, and this kicked off the new year July first, so these are wages prior to June thirty, at the what referendum are we talking about?
We always budget for two referendums.
Okay.
Last year we only had one referendum for the budget, we didn't have any, the bonding refer, bonding that we did last year for the school and sewers did not have to go to referendum.
So which primary are we talking about, what was the date of the primary?
Primary would have been last, uh, last May when we voted on a referendum, that would have been it.
I don't, I honestly don't remember it.
But there's no early voting for the primary last year.
No, there wasn't really voting on that.
No, it was gearing up for, they were buying the equipment, they had the grant.
I don't know, guy, guy asked, you're part-time.
Yeah.
And you're all sick, you don't get anything.
But in her case, being elected, I honestly don't know what, what it is.
I don't understand.
Cause she's an elected official. I don't know. That's why I said, I don't know if she's on the payroll or not. I didn't, I really paid attention to it.
I want to see if she got, gets a pay every, every week, once a month?
Once a week.
Once a week?
I'll, I'll look it up tomorrow.
Cause I said, she's part-time, she, that'd be a part-time, yeah, you could do W two or ten ninety-nine. But if you're part-time, you have no benefits, so you would not-
Who's that?
Oh, Linda?
Linda, oh, and she's still the-
I don't wanna, I should say registrar, huh?
Isn't, isn't she still the registrar?
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about it, cause we're on film and I don't wanna talk about personnel issues.
Yeah, but she, but, but, they are elected, so they've served their term until, uh, they are unelected.
Yes.
Exactly.
Whether they, whether a person shows up or not in any elective office.
No, that's, that's, that's a hundred percent true, we're not talking about that.
Okay.
All right. All right, so, that was, again, now I have to go back, that's all in favor?
I didn't get the motion here, so.
Okay, motion?
Sue and, uh, Nikki.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This one is early voting, it's lost, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Second.
This is our primaries, guys, though.
Well, we're taking the money, we're taking the money out of, that's for the, uh, ele, elected primary expenses.
But it's two.
Uh, I could, I don't know.
I don't, but that was a miserable year, I don't know that there was a primary last year, we had a presidential primary.
This year.
This year.
Right.
This, this is as of June thirtieth.
No, and-
The only thing I got, I thought maybe they did have early voting, trying to get out at town hall for the referendum. I thought you could go to two places, I could be wrong.
There was one, I think it was primary, the presidential primary.
Yeah.
Then what, where do we stand here?
I made a motion for a second.
You made a motion, and you got a, who's, who's got the question? Anybody?
Well, we, we just discussed it.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Nikki, I'll look that up for you, while you're not-
No, it's, it's quite right.
Good.
Okay, tax collector, all right. And I can see benefits for fourteen thousand, that's, what's her name, hold on, the collector doesn't take, uh, benefits, medical, I think, I don't know.
Correct.
Okay, and.
This is, while I make a motion-
Is this part of the, uh, is this part of the supervisors?
No, the tax collector was appointed after Ashley had resigned, uh, but wasn't being paid the full salary. After she was elected in November, she went up to the full salary, and that's why the difference of the eight thousand dollars in her pay. Um, the clerk was just the opposite, under the union contract, she was getting paid a stipend for, because the tax collector wasn't, um, she was training the tax collector in what to do.
I, Jen, I, I recall, didn't we say no to summer help, or was it that?
You did.
So why, why are we putting-
I can't speak to it. I know we paid it, I know somebody was down there.
We voted no to that, for it.
Right.
Motion to deny.
We can't, it's wages.
We didn't approve that.
I know, but, uh-
And it was paid.
It got paid, not, well, they should have paid it, is a different question.
So what happened now?
So the question is, what, if it wasn't in the budget, and that person gets paid, and I, I could, uh, uh-
Well, that's not right.
Of course not.
So funding it, but, wouldn't have money from one budget, nor money from another, cause there was zero, so that shows. That it didn't belong there. It went from zero to fifteen hundred.
No.
But what's your recourse, that's the issue, it all comes down to that.
You don't have a recourse here, I can tell you, the thing is, we face, we did, we did budget to budget the benefits, okay, which probably, we slipped up there, but, uh, the, the money's in the department, that, we gotta-
I, I understand that, but what happens, what, I mean, does, does somebody meet with the tax collector and say, look, that was not in the budget? That's, that's not right. That, that should not be-
Especially in after the month of August, it's not a, a, a doing month.
And that's why we didn't approve it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
So even if we deny it, it makes no difference, because it's already been paid?
I know, but it's the principle of the day.
But I think the difference is-
If you deny it, it'll end up being a, um, in the budget cash flow, the check was taken out before in the audit report, it will have a negative number in there, uh, which could create some flags.
The thing is, all right, it shouldn't have been paid upfront, the person that paid it, who'd have been paying it?
Again, you pay, you put a person in a position, you have to pay them, it shouldn't have been, the person shouldn't have been in a position.
The person in the position, yeah.
So who put the per, well, we're not gonna say names, but somebody put the person in the position. So, so we could deny it then, and it just shows up as, in a, a line item.
Deny, deny the move, could do that, I don't think it's gonna-
I mean, if fifteen hundred dollars, then why do you-
I need to point, it's the principle, look, everybody should get paid for their work, but that wasn't in the budget, so, I don't know. We can approve that.
So, students.
Well, not only do we not, did we not approve it, the residents didn't approve it either, by their approval of the budget.
That's right, but we're, we're in the voice, we're in the voice of the residents.
The referendum, the referendum, I believe, is gold, yeah, cause that was a town meeting, form of government, the referendum is gold.
So, the explanation says summer help was not budgeted, but it was needed due to vacations, so what happens if they have nobody to cover during taxes and tax correction?
That's why you got two people.
And they, they took off.
Probably shouldn't be taking that, you shouldn't charge taxes.
Under normal circumstances, correct, but the industry-
So I can see, cause I, can you say that about our department?
Uh, you can, yeah, that's true. They would, I mean, that's, that's a logical explanation here.
It should be always, somebody has to be always covering the office.
But you put a summer, part-time person in charge of the tax office?
Yeah. That, that's right, come on.
I don't know what they did, I'm just saying, that's the explanation, needed due to vacations. On doing tax collection, so they do need two people.
Two, yeah, we, we knocked down a lot of their work, I know that, this point there.
I, I understand, but they still need the second person.
We changed that?
I think if you were to talk to Dana, she's said that she operates the Seymour tax office, efficiently with less people.
She does.
My time's out, it's, by herself, and she has more accounts than us.
Yeah.
Seymour's, Jacob, weren't there no vacation policy during certain periods of time here?
Actually, there was.
Is there like, no vacation policy during certain periods of time?
Do people get to take vacation whenever they want, or does it have to be approved by someone?
Is that an elected official?
They, they're supposed to fill out a form requesting it, that goes to the office of first selection.
Okay.
Elected officials can take off anytime they want, nobody can tell them they can't.
But not, everybody in that office is elected.
No, but the person that is, could take, the question is, you won't get your job done, hopefully you would, you would get reelected, obviously.
Yeah, but, but let's say that first, the elected official took off fine, but then the, the assistant shouldn't be taking off the time as well.
No, you can control that too, the other person, yes, okay, look, let's do this, okay, um, what's done is done, we know it, okay, so, we're gonna come back and address this, all right? Listen, we gotta prove it anyway, it's already been paid, we can't, we can't say no, we don't wanna, what I would do is, let's let, uh, wages, summer help, okay, take that, push that back to, uh, and take it out of benefits, and let that account just sit over, you know what I mean? Let it show, let it show up in the books as over, the summer help, okay, you know, you'll, you'll just take it.
So you'll approve the first two lines, and the fourth line, and the fifth line, but not the third?
That's right.
Okay, so a chance for him to.
And make the entry, okay, okay.
To approve everything but that line.
Who was the second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All right. By the way, we gotta use, all these, son, you're, you're happy that we're, we're done with, uh, June thirty, two oh two four?
Yeah, the only thing that we call is anything to come up on, two oh two four is, I go through and do a, uh, a review of the expenses that are paid in the month of July and August, to make sure people aren't paying June bills, because they had bills that didn't have money in their budget.
Like the same problem we have with, with the board of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I still have to do that, and if I find some bills, I might.
I mean, your, your, your department in, in the work is here in the leisure, okay, that's fine, okay, all right, town hall, who else using a phone here still?
That was, uh, that was all security for the, um, registrar of voters, um, we had to bring in a dedicated fiber optic line, even though the fiber optic has like forty-eight peers in it, we, and we're only using one for the registrar, we can't use it for anything else, but, uh, we had to, that, we, they had to dig a trench from the street all the way on the side of the building and in, and over to the registers, for security, so that nobody can hack the elections.
They did explain that, I remember they explained that, I'll make the motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
One more question, about, just for Jim, if you have a question, the, this, the fiber optic, and any other expenses associated with having early voting here, like, just ball, not like product, but like ballpark, what was that to?
I'll talk to Ellen, because I'm sure she has the numbers, uh, she's probably already done it, because this wasn't for early voting, this was for voter security, after the elections, uh, four years ago, when everybody was saying it was voter fraud, et cetera.
So that, that was, this was not specific to her?
This has nothing to do with early voting.
Right.
Can we bring the report, though, does we have, the total cost?
Yeah.
Okay, we go down the floor now.
Do we have an account of how many people are still utilized?
I'm sure we're.
Yeah, I don't know. Motion on number thirty, town hall, we discussed it.
Yeah, and we had Paula and Nikki do the first.
Because it's going to go in favor?
Uh.
All right, town hall.
I'm just curious. No, no, I'm just curious, like, listen, I'm all for people working, and, but, why do we need receptionists? Why, because, why do we need receptionists, I mean, if somebody comes in, you know, uh, if somebody calls, you've got an automated phone attendant, if somebody comes to the actual office, you've got people that sit at the glass window into that area, so, what do we need receptionists for? Just asking in general.
I'll answer your question with a statement, the same question gets asked every year of budget time.
And I thought we zeroed it out.
You did, you did, there is nothing in the budget, and that's why I had to.
That's why I put it in, and that was.
And it was put back in.
Yeah, Dana, Dana's always had a, uh, problem with the receptionist, that was put back in, that's the same situation that's in the prior, okay, with the, with the summer help, with the tax collectors office, you're in the same situation here.
What?
Voter positions that people could go back and, they use them when they're.
We used to, no, we're. Yeah, that, we, we used to, and I think in, two years ago, it was cut out of the budget.
It was, that was cut out, some of these other positions were, but, um.
The last voter we had was transferred as a full-timer of the Public Works a few years ago.
Let me ask you, just, I, I, I know, I think, uh, we gotta bring this up at another time, but, on this one, okay, equipment lease, got eight thousand dollars, where's, where's that, what's that lease saying?
I had money in there to buy, um, new copy machines, but the copy machines were had here, it's like, they were working, so didn't, didn't bother replacing them, just because the five-year lease is up.
They worked well?
People complained about it, but.
But on lease, that, that, they have to take care of the repairs of, of the lease, yeah.
But it's a lot cheaper to hire and pay a maintenance contract than it is to pay a lease.
And the, the benefits, obviously, the benefits didn't come from, what, what account, what benefits was in that town hall?
Benefits would've had in there, the, um.
Part-timers would have benefits.
No, it would be the, for the custodian, and for the facilities person that was hired here.
And the facilities maintenance, that's not a wage line, right, that's for, like, like, physical repairs or something?
Yeah.
It wasn't, it's just a general throw-all year?
No, it's a front.
Yeah, uh, the big thing is, like, carpeting came out a lot cheaper than we thought it would come in.
This carpet?
Yeah.
Gee, I wonder why? Okay.
And just real quick, why is there such a difference between the AM and the PM receptionist, isn't, aren't, weren't they half-time each?
Yeah, but I just went by where they were coded, when they got paid.
So the receptionist, one receptionist worked a lot more hours than the other one?
Correct, yep.
And was it last year, we some does out, so, isn't this the same thing, what we just did?
Yeah, I'm confused, if we, if we just took out the wages, summer help, because it wasn't budgeted, why are we not taking that out of reception, not budgeted?
Well, we could, nobody's made the motion yet.
I made a motion, there's a motion, Victor. I made a motion, and we paid it up.
Okay. I'll start with that.
It's two lines, first two.
Two line hooks, again, motion from where to where?
Taking it out of what, and gonna leave it?
Take the two out of it, because deny the whole thing.
Deny the whole thing, we take, we take it out, so that, that, that's gonna stick in there as over budget.
So you're making a motion to deny. It is.
Twenty-two, it, it is, it's gonna stay in there, we're not moving it.
No, we're not moving it, he's, he's motioning to deny anti-arrival.
Yeah.
Second.
You seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
But, again, hold on, we're not denying it as far as it's already been paid.
Yeah.
We're denying it just for the move.
Right, yeah, denying it.
Correct, we're just to transfer.
So it's gonna show up?
In, in the budget.
In the budget?
Yeah.
When the auditor sees it, right?
All right. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Post. Okay, town hall. From, I guess you didn't buy office supplies this year, huh?
No.
What vehicle was repaired?
Um, three vehicles, uh, planning and zoning, which was a two thousand nine, um, in on buttons, which was a two thousand nine, and the, and then, what's that?
Sixteen years old. Sixteen years old.
Yep, and then the Ford Taurus, which I think is a thirteen or a twelve, that came down from the senior center, uh, so we could at least get it roadworthy, it's not, it's never gonna be a transport vehicle again, but.
Put it for a Bentley.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right.
Actually, well, one quick question before we move on, but, um, so that's the vehicle that came from the senior center, where is that now, is it, do we still have it?
It's, it's sitting out here, it's used as like a floater vehicle.
Sort of, it, it's, so it's not good enough for the senior center because of the mileage, the disrepair?
They're, they're transporting the public, so it's got, it meets a different standard, like on the buses, they have to be inspected by the state, um.
So it has been fixed, so we can use it as a backup at this point, if the Philly are in a tight spot?
Old Center School, and I can tell you, I, I think right off the bat here is because we didn't pick this up, right, or we ended up picking it up last year, last half of that budget, this is the first half of that budget that last year, is that my right or wrong?
You're right, in the summer, uh, twenty-three, that they moved up to, uh, Great Oak, and this budget would've been put together in the spring of twenty-three.
So where are we moving this from? There's enough money in that budget to move this stuff around, we budgeted. It's low electricity by twelve thousand dollars?
No, we have one thousand.
That's from the, okay, facility, and the heat, so in the heat, thirty-five thousand, and did we ever get that heat straightened out, no?
No.
Because they told me it did, and I guess it did. All right, need a motion here.
I'll make the motion, second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, the Center School is, uh, you know, I know they're talking about moving the, they want to move the police station in there, um, I'm completely against that, and I, since we're on the Center School, I figured I'd just talk about it now, I mean, they just got their, their report from Tig and Bond, or I don't know how you pronounce it, but the, the cost to fix the building up is almost seven, seven to eight million dollars. And they identified, uh, three point seven million dollars in immediate needs, immediate needs, of which almost seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand have to do with code violations, uh, another one point one million in the next, uh, year to a couple of years, and then another long-term of eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, or eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, just to get the school back to essentially good condition, and we're talking about investing ARPA money to move a police station there? I mean, it's a seventy-six-year-old building, the building should be demolished, if we could build a library, an almost eighty-five hundred square foot library, for three and a half million dollars, but we're gonna take a seventy-six-year-old building and invest, you know, four, five, six, seven, eight million dollars?
Yeah, and it costs.
It makes no sense.
It doesn't stop.
It makes no sense.
It's, it's, it's.
I would demolish the building, and then let's design a, a new police station, let's design a community center, and spend that five, six, seven million dollars on a new building versus an old seventy-six-year-old building, that we don't even know has mold issues, has asbestos issues, has PCB issues?
Has all three.
Has all three, because, I mean, they even, even, uh, in, in one of the letters, uh, from, like, I don't even know how to pronounce it, Tig and Bond, it says, sus- suspect asbestos-containing material sampling, it says, prior to any type of building demolition renovation, a thorough investigation is required to identify and quantify asbestos-containing materials by the EPA, Connecticut Department of Public Health, and OSHA, that's prior to doing any renovations, so how can we, as a town, even with its ARPA money, spend money to put the police station there, when they have to go through all this stuff, just to do an assessment beyond what was already done? And we're talking about four, five, six, seven, eight million dollars, that's probably on the low side, quite honestly.
What you got going, that is, what you got going, the only one that, uh, that seems to kind of stuck to the budget, and actually did sensibly, was the, uh, Great Oak, that came in, right, what we said, and it came in, and it came out as a nice job, we got what we wanted, but you think about it, what are all those things wrong with that building, it's only one year since we had children in there, one year ago, we had children in that building.
But in addition to that, you're talking about taking a building that, uh, is gonna house a police station in the same building as a community center. What sense does that make?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, there's a basketball court, great, there's a cat here, it's great, but start fresh, don't invest that much money into a, a bad building, it's only gonna get worse.
And a lot of these old buildings, like, in other towns, you see these old relics up there, eventually you see, you see the wrecking ball giving a good whack, that's what, that's what it always winds up to, because it's, some are just not repairable.
Because I tell you, from my position, they could spend the half a million, a million dollars of ARPA money to put, to, to try to put a police station there, fine, but if they come back here for any more money, I'm not voting and creating any more money to that school, so that means the rest of that school, if you all vote in the same way that I do, will fall into disrepair, and it'll be worse off, so, I think they should use that money to knock it down, but that's not my decision, but I'm just telling you right now, unless somebody, unless something happens, I understand something I completely don't understand, I'll never vote in more, for more money in that school, I think it's throwing good money down the drain. It's just nineteen cents.
That's, uh, has always been a problem.
Yeah.
Always been a problem, right, always been a problem, Bob the Bishop swears, when he went to school there, there was a brook, the brook ran right under that building, at one time, okay, so, it's always moldy in there, it's always moldy, you never, you never saw, I, I didn't say never, because with technology, you can solve anything, if you wanna spend the money, if you wanna spend the money, I don't know, I don't know, this is just, uh, this is just paying the bills on the building, it's not doing anything.
No, I know, I know, but I'm saying, we're, we're throwing good money into a bad situation.
I hear you, I hear you, you know, there's a good thing to have a referendum on it, come up with, come up with plans, if it's X amount of money, then you have a referendum on it, let the town vote on it, you know, to me, that's, that's what should probably take place, okay, and this one here, this one here, this one, um, we're just moving to, we're just paying the bills here, we got, we have monies in that whole department, which is great, way over us on, and the heat, I can understand the heat there, it's always been a problem, there's another thing, you gotta do a whole central, you wanna, you gotta do some, a whole central heat, that whole thing's gotta come out, and you'll, if any, okay, any other discussion, we did get a motion, anybody?
All in.
All, okay, all in favor?
None.
Post.
I make the motion to approve the tree worm.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, WPCI.
Is this up for the high school area? Is that the trail maintenance?
No, no, the bridal trail.
Oh, bridal trail.
We put the sewer main under the bridal trail, and the state charges us basically a yearly rent, they call it trail maintenance.
Do we have a WPCI building or office?
Uh, there's a small office at the, um, counter lane pump station.
And it uses that much in telephone and electricity, oh, that's from?
All the alarms and all the different pump stations are using telephone.
Okay, got it.
These are all rate increases, correct?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All fair?
Aye.
Number thirty-six is the first one where it's not coming from within the department, but it's still staying within public works.
Move it in another cost center for public works. Like, you know, I, I take that whole deal as public works.
Yes, I, that's why I tried to prove that.
Same salaries and everything else, so that doesn't bother them, okay? Now, if he said, we don't have any place to take it from, then we got a problem. Okay, just that, uh, bottomless me is, we're, we're that far off the budget? We need to go with the child of the.
That's a, the tonnage, no, tonnage is way up there.
It's the cost increases.
Yeah.
What is the line materials general?
That's where they would buy the sand, the salt, the, uh, asphalt for paving the roads.
They have two mild winters. We've had two mild winters, I got a feeling, we won't, we'll be lucky this year. But who knows? But that's why you, they had that account, now next year, they may not have that account, make it rain. So. Disposal, is that, is what we pay, um?
It's for the US hauling or, uh, winter roads.
If they go up?
Yep.
Alright. Could be expensive, like. Okay, anybody who made the motions here, anybody?
Nobody, yeah.
Nobody, okay.
Wait, go ahead, make the motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Treasure it.
Deny.
Listen, no way.
Pause line.
Why's it not calculated correctly?
I'll make the, I'll first, I'll, I'll just make the motion to approve.
Any second.
I already second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, so, yeah, what, but is it not, wasn't it not calculated correctly, or?
The budget, the number that was in the budget, she was making more than that when the budget was approved.
Okay.
Or if we want entertainment, we can deny it. If we wanted to have some entertainment here. Okay, field maintenance, parks and the shields. They, they had a lot of field maintenance to do, and I, I definitely didn't even touch it all back.
No, this is what they were over, their budget's like three hundred and forty thousand.
That includes all the fields that they take care of too, or?
Includes all the fields, including all the borderhead fields.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Town council, assessment appeals.
Was this like, uh?
This was the.
A large, uh, appeal?
This was a, the large appeal on the gas pipeline people that was going on for several years, um. And it was finally settled sometime in the last fiscal year.
Paid a lot of money, paid a lot of money to this guy, and, and think that, uh, you know, paying about a seven hundred dollar an hour rate.
Well, with doing, I forgot, wasn't there something where you said the, uh, somebody said, the, we actually, it may, we, they, yes, we appealed it, but somehow they were taxing correctly to our benefit? I thought there was something with the pipeline, or maybe there was another project.
Well, they took the wrong depreciation on the personal property form.
Okay.
They were, they were depreciating it too, too fast.
The argument in the appeal was they were taking ten percent depreciation per year.
Okay.
Uh, our argument was that, under Connecticut general assessing statutes, you have to use the same depreciation schedule that you file with the federal regulatory commission to get your rates set. So you can't use one set for town records and another one for getting your rates set.
So this is expensive, but the assessment was higher than what, uh?
Correct, we didn't get everything we wanted, but we got, they're not getting ten percent per year assessment, and, uh, we're not getting, um, two percent per year.
But I don't think we got what we wanted on the makeup, the difference of taking the ten percent all those years, and then going back to one, I don't know if we.
Well, they wouldn't let, you can only go back under a little statute, three years.
Three years, cause, um.
I'll make the motion to approve.
But if you, you weren't on the board, but several years ago, they paid three point two million, that's why we didn't have the rate increase.
We didn't have rate increase, we're doing a good amount of tax.
They paid three, no, we didn't.
We didn't give back, we had to give them a credit.
We had to give them a credit, a half a million dollars on this year's bill, so the two point seven, we, uh, three point two, we were able to keep two point seven of it.
I make the motion.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
This is, let's see here, finance contingency, that was the money, I had seventeen thousand in there.
Right.
Did I get that?
And this is getting you for five.
Seventeen thousand is our year-end number.
Yeah, well, now, if you, that's only down to eleven.
Eleven thousand. Let's go, let's go, eleven, okay. Insurance claims, does that be, isn't our insurance one up because of that claim?
No, this is, um, when we have a claim, we have a deductible that's, um, might be, say, on properties, five thousand dollars, on vehicles, five hundred dollars. Uh, so if we have a property claim, the first five thousand's gotta come out of the budget, and we had a lot more claims than we felt we did, or we planned on.
This is just the overage, what is the, what was the actual line, do you remember?
I think the budget was fifteen thousand, so it'd be twenty, twenty thousand.
Insurance is not going down.
Well, this year, hills, that number's gonna be probably closer to two hundred thousand. Just the damage on the, uh, from the flood.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, assessor, two, wages.
Those we did all, that's the backup for the.
The backup, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page one, we're done.
Oh, sure, sir. About a thousand two forty-six.
So is it forty of them, right?
Yep.
Forty transfers. Okay. Okay, so, did we have the, um, contingency here?
Three pages from the back.
Okay, okay, so you took it out, you brought it out to eleven, okay. That's our contingency as of last year, and if that holds, the eleven thousand dollars goes into our surplus.
Want to take a split?
Yeah, we did. As a matter of fact, that ought to be a room rule. Board of Finance can split any, I'll tell you, boy, they have a surplus, they won't believe. That's why you don't give a Board of Finance, so, did you see the person that stole it? It was on the news today, from, um.
No, it was a hundred and ninety-two million.
Hundred ninety-two million?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Macy's.
For Macy's, that's right.
It was, it obviously was.
It was expen- it was expended, the way they accounted for expenses, I don't know.
Or what they did is they, they overcharged, they took a, they took a piece of every, every package that went out. So they charged you a package, they, they said it cost a dollar, they take ten cents on that dollar, and put the ninety, and so they get caught for a number of years. The reason they caught it, they did the audit, and they just delayed the audit to, to the stockholders. And, oh, by the way, what, oh, by the way, that is. For a number of years, and I can see how it happens, I can see, I can definitely see it.
How are you gonna get away with stealing a hundred and ninety-two million?
Cause it's a co- course of a couple of years, or three years, you know, they, let's say you're a, let's say you're a, a ten billion dollar company. Hundred fifty thousand dollars, a ten billion dollar company, right?
Wouldn't have gotten away with it if they kept it at a million dollars, a million, but a hundred and ninety-two?
When I was going to school for auditing, they, uh, one of the case studies was, I think it was Bank of America, the programmers wrote a program that put the interest in everybody's account, but the rounding from each penny went into a separate account, and it added up to millions that were stolen just by taking the, uh, half a penny and a quarter of a penny on the.
Yeah, the program did that for, yeah, so, yeah, sure. Okay, alright, contingency and the tax report, taxes for, the taxes are right on. So, what everybody got was, I got these two sheets from Herman.
I got some ones for you.
Okay, what I, what I was worried about, you know?
Was you take their York unit? Oh, okay.
First, Great Oak, that was a metro school, okay? What I'm worried about is, um, we have a lot of stu- lot, lot of projects, a lot of projects that weren't paid for, or we paid them, but we also got them is, we got them as, um, short-term borrowing, okay, we haven't gone out to bond yet, but that number's getting enormous, okay? So the first one I want to tell you is, this is the Great Oak school that you looked at. Everybody went through and saw the H, H V, HVAC, and saw everything, and did a nice job, but we started off, we said, um, we would, we would bill out, the budget was four million, two fifty-five. Herman's got it coming in at four million, two oh two, of course, they saved some money here. Funds remaining to the, uh, con- in contract is twenty-one thousand dollars they have, okay? Now, this supposedly is the town nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have to pay out of our, out of our budget, okay? But, here's where I get, here's where I have a problem, okay? We're getting from Eversource, we got the four hundred and seventeen thousand, and we're supposed to get, uh, the check from the state of one million, eight, eight, eight. Who tracks that?
Um, Herman and I do, and I can tell you, I know to the penny, how much we've gotten so far, zero.
Okay.
We, we've, um, Herman's working with the CSG group, um, Mike Frenza, with the State of Connecticut to get the, uh, million eight from us, for us. Um, and they haven't given us anything yet, and Herman's working.
Well, guys, when did you start asking for it?
Probably six, eight months ago. We didn't hire Mike until, um, probably, uh, just before we went on the cruise, so it was probably in September.
So what about these guys to, to hawk this stuff through, you, you don't?
By the statute, it's gotta be done by the superintendent, um, so, like, Herman, we have, it's at Dr. Miller's office.
Yeah, we had the meeting at, uh, at, um.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy the way it is, and you probably have to hire somebody.
So Herman was involved in this, and Herman's chasing that, and the other part that scares me is this, the million dollars from Eversource based on our energy savings, okay? So, I mean, that's a jump ball, you know, there's no guarantee that that million dollars is gonna come to us, we may get, we may, I'm not saying we won't, but we may. Right now, we've got a, we've got a, uh, electricity payment problem because we got Zoom with the big rates. Now, I think this is going on usage, and not, uh, the.
This is, no, this is a straight loan, like, Eversource is supposed to give us a million dollars.
They didn't do that yet either.
They have not done it yet, and then they give us, we give that, they add two hundred thousand dollars a year to the Board of Education's bill for five years.
That's right, but, according to Herman, it was calculated that we could pay for that, it would never fail it because we would have the savings in our electric bill, okay? That's what, that's the theory. There's no guarantee on that million bucks.
Absolutely not.
No guarantee at all, so instead of being nine hundred and fifty thousand, the town could be looking at a million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, okay? Now, in the meantime, Jim, you've gotta start paying some bills here. Okay, did, did, you must have paid, uh, um, who's the contractor? Airflow or air?
Air tent.
Air tent, yeah. Have you paid him?
Yep.
Yeah, paid him.
And I have to go out and do a short-term borrowing on this, there's a, a resolution, there's a resolution coming before you. Last, last year at town meeting, the bond, the authorization for, uh, the whole project was approved, and said the bond's nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Nine hundred and fifty, yeah.
I can't short-term borrow on that, I need an amendment to.
To that bond?
Right.
Okay.
Which is gonna be coming to you in the next couple of weeks.
What I wanna do, I wanna finish, I wanna get the, let everybody know what, what we've got facing us, okay? That's this one, if everybody, everybody understand this one, okay? Then you got, um, the, uh, the cafeteria at the Great Oak School, we're gonna do the cafeteria. And the net bonding on that's a million five, the net bonding on that would give the, the town's response for another seven hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and two thousand dollars. Actually, almost seven, seven hundred and three thousand dollars, okay? On top of the million, the nine hundred and fifty thousand, possibly, we don't know, it's, it's at least nine hundred and fifty, oh, correct, it's at least nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? Plus the seven oh two for the, uh, uh, roof, the, uh, I'm sorry, for the gymnasium there, okay? Other roof. Alright, now Herman, doing a good job, Herman's following these through for us, so that they're not, they're not just sitting there, okay? And he's a watchdog, we had to have somebody do it, and he's got the time and he volunteers to do it, he does a good job.
And he is detail-oriented.
Okay, so, that's that job. Then I sent to Herman, well, what about Quaker Farm School project? That has not, we have the grant, but that is not an approved project that I know of.
Neither is the cafeteria gym.
Okay, so, get this, so far on that one, if we do it, it's about five million dollars to do Quaker Farms. Of the five million, I want you to realize this in case it comes to us, okay? We're making all this money, okay? It would cost us, the net of that five million, it'll cost the town three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, okay? So, the roof we already approved, that was, uh, what did we say we were?
Three fifty, I think it came out of fund balance.
Fund balance, okay, that's already been approved, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's why, um, fund balance could be a lot of fun to look for. Okay, then. I have a question for you, Jim. I got this sheet from, uh, from, um, the finance director at the Board of Education, okay? Now, he's telling me, and I don't understand this, they apply for a lot of grants through the year, okay? But, he said that the Board of Education owed the town a million dollars because one grant that they got, we owed the town a million dollars. And I got this sheet here, the grant fund balances.
What, what it probably, what he's probably referring to?
He says he, he wrote you a check, he's gonna write you, send you a million dollars.
They have one payroll system down there, uh, because you have, might have an employee that's working a full week, but one day might be on grants. So it's all done through the payroll. I paid, I had to put the money into the bank to cover the payroll. At the end of the year, they calculate how much of that money I put into the bank for payroll should have come from the state grants. should have come from the state grants, and it came out, he calculated nine hundred and sixty-one...
Nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
And then he cut me a check for that to reimburse it, yes.
So that went back into your...
He actually owed two years because we didn't, uh...
Do it the year before.
In his, his absence the year before, it wasn't done.
So what happened, did we go...
So he, he, the check was actually for close to two million.
Oh, it was, okay, all right, now, how did you record that? You put it in surplus?
Oh, it was, um, due from the Board of Education, it was set up by the orders last year.
How did that affect our, you already had it in your balance because you had it as a receivable?
Correct.
So it didn't affect our balance?
Correct.
So I don't like to do it that way.
How do you know?
We got a, we got, we found two million dollars, those two million dollars are in our balance that owed us it.
You gotta match the expenses to the year they took place in.
Okay, all right, that's that one.
Then it's the one bond issue you didn't talk about, so, to add to that, it's Towner Lane.
Hold on, everybody. I put this sheet together. I need a wife, I really need a wife, all right? Now, remember, I handed this sheet out a long time ago, and I had just proposed stuff, okay? And our proposed stuff here would have been ten million dollars, but let's, right, here, the Great Oak School, I put down a million, nine fifty, it's, it's, you take the, you take, it's either nine hundred thousand dollars or it's a million. Uh, Quaker Farms School is not approved yet, so I, I, I got two million, two million eight seventy-five, but we can do that yet. Towner Lane, we put away, in that bonding, a, a bonding approval, we put away two million dollars. And I keep asking Scott, can I have, uh, an accounting of that?
Oh, I can get that for you.
You got, that, get that, how much of that two million dollars did we actually spend?
I can tell you, I'll get it pretty tomorrow morning.
He told me...
My guess is probably about a million four or so.
Yeah, cause they, there was add-ons too, you know?
The original contract was a million one, and then they, um, added on this footage, the linear footage of both, uh, Christian Street.
Okay, so that goes in the bond, not been paid, we got it here showing a short-term payment. There's two types of, uh, loans we have. We have bonded loans and not bonded loans, okay, one and two, okay? This, we're adding all those up, do you have an idea of how much we got so far? Money you put away that, that was bonded, you had to pay off?
Probably about three, three to four million.
Yeah, you, don't forget, our little fire truck, one million eight hundred and fifty.
Well, that, that I haven't paid yet.
We haven't paid it, but it's, it's gonna be in two thousand, it's gonna be in this budget year, so that's another million eight. The Great Oak Roof, we got, and that's paid. The e-commerce pump station, I haven't gotten anything on that. How did that get paid? Somebody kept saying the, the power plant paid for it?
No, the power plant paid part of it, um, there was a steep grant that paid part of it, I believe part of it. Um, no, it was the generator. You, you approved some money for it in the last year, uh, coming out of fund balance.
Does anybody remember, the e-commerce pump station?
And then there was another hundred thousand dollars for the, um, electric.
The electric was, that was, uh, emergency, okay? They forgot to get the wires, and that I have, okay, the pump is, but, uh, pump's operational, all right? They don't have any, they don't have any customers using it right now, but it's operational.
Like, what do they do more than that?
One, one person probably uses it, okay? But I haven't seen any, 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 any monies on that. How do we pay for it?
I, I'll find out.
I think, here's what I think, I think they included it in a two million dollar bond, no?
Definitely not, because the bond authorization talks about specific language in there, only for the forced name, it can only be used on Towner Lane to Christian Street.
All right, so I put this down here as four hundred thousand, but I have no idea where it can go. The library basement, we still owe.
I think you're right around four hundred thousand, because I think the total pump was around eight hundred thousand. We got a hundred round numbers, we got two hundred and eighty, call it three hundred thousand from the power company, got a hundred thousand for the steep grant.
Okay, but, uh, four hundred. And then I got the labor invasion, uh, started off at two, two forty, we're up to three sixty on that? I don't know why that went up, but that was the final cost on the labor invasion, we haven't paid that out yet, that's still sitting out there.
I just have a quick question, do we have a list somewhere, maybe this is what you're...
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, but, it, the entire li- a list of the entirety of all projects...
That's what I wanna do, I got Herman...
Going on town, the funding source, the funding source, how much we receive, what's still owed, how much we've paid, you know, and a full accounting of every single project, every single grant, et cetera.
Everything that, uh, uh, everything that we approved, okay, let's do that one, everything we approved so far. But, okay, well, let me, let me continue on. I'm trying to do that, that's why I try to put this together, okay, and screen it, and then Herman's, Herman's keep feeding me all the stuff he has on that project, right? The Great Oak, Great Oak isn't finished, it's finished, but they haven't finished paying, okay? So we have other stuff to do, but I'm gonna try to put this together, that's what gets me worried because we're, we're way over our head. Okay, we're talking, and you, people, somehow people got the impression we're highly, highly leveraged in this town, okay? Our is debt, our debt is, is, is fairly small compared to a lot of towns. Our problem is, you got ten million tax, uh, ten million, you got ten thousand taxpayers, they have to absorb all that debt, okay? So per capita, it's high, right? The town, the town has the, the money and the resources to pay it off, obviously, but if we keep doing all these big projects, like Center School, it, it would, it would have, it would have our debt over a hundred thousand dollars. A hundred million dollars, I'm sorry. Okay, the, uh, engineering Chestnut Tree, we got ninety-nine thousand, did that ever get paid?
No, we never approved it.
We didn't, I know we didn't approve it, but that doesn't mean it didn't get paid, right? But...
I think he got paid, like, fifteen thousand or ten thousand, which was left in the selectmen's engineering budget at the end of last year, but that's it.
That's it, so where does that project stand?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll read something to you later on, but, well, this is what I sent to the governor's office, um, last Friday when Mark Bowden, through Mark Bowden. Oxford has a multimillion dollar grant to fix Chestnut Tree Hill Road. Can the grant be redirected to be used to fix the flooding damage?
In lieu of...
Just in Chestnut Tree Hill Road, can I take that four million and use it for the flood? And then I, number five on my list was the same as number four above for the grant, for the four, four million dollars to put sidewalks in on Oxford Road.
Say that again?
We got a grant for four million dollars to put sidewalks from Duckton Road down to Corey Walk.
Yeah.
So my question to the governor's office again was, can we have that money redirected instead of putting the sidewalks in right now to be used to pay for the flood damage?
Okay, because we, we have a grant, but we've never approved.
We never approved that side.
We never approved putting in sidewalks.
No, that's what I'm saying, but, but if it can be reused, then we don't have to worry about, um, flood damage.
Yeah.
To the same sidewalk.
Well, and then my next question on there, it's getting off of your thing a little bit, number six on my list, any of the bridges that you have to redesign on, uh, Route sixty-seven, I'm referring to the one down by Fritz's, can the bridge design be amended to allow room for a sidewalk so that if and when we ever put sidewalks in, we don't have to put an additional bridge in, kill it all, kill it all at once? So this was sent, I sent it to, well, Mark Bowden's the commissioner with the governor's office, and I, I was at a different meeting on Friday, I couldn't be here, um, so I just put it in writing for him.
I have a question on that, this is not pro or anti sidewalk, but if, if they were to allow us to repurpose that grant, what do you think would be the likelihood of ever securing the grant then later for the sidewalk?
I have no clue, I didn't talk to anybody, this was just, um, when I knew I couldn't be here on Friday for the grant, on Thursday night, I just started brainstorming and writing out some questions, uh, so that at least my thoughts could be presented at the meeting on Friday. As far as grant, I have no clue.
Do you know of any other instances where that, that has happened, or no?
I think you'd have to get the legislature in on that.
Well, I don't, I don't even know if it's federal money or state money, it could be, uh, federal money that flows through the state, um...
Either way, our cost is the same at the end of the day, because if we spend two million on sidewalk or we spend two million on repairs, it's still a two million dollar cost, we're just...
Is it easier to swallow if it's flood repairs?
Yeah, no, exactly, I, I'm, I'm more prepared to flood repairs than a potential sidewalk.
The sidewalk, caution on that sidewalk, because we'd be on the hook, what, forty percent of it?
Uh, twenty percent.
Twenty percent, forty with the states, twenty with the feds?
Yeah.
So twenty percent of three million, what you got there, six hundred thousand?
Two to twenty or twenty-five.
I thought it was more than three million, I thought it was like six or seven million.
The sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
The original is three million, I, I know, okay, cause we always...
Three point two million.
Okay.
That we, that we, we figured six, then the town had gotta pick up six hundred thousand of it, which, right now, you know, nice to have, but not necessary, those are all nice-to-have stuff, okay? Now, uh, okay, so the engineering Chestnut Tree, we didn't approve it, and right now it's not moving forward. One more thing about that. Again, that's the, the, um, the stuff I have for, uh, what's not finished, okay? We finished, we have a couple of things, we have, we have... This I don't understand, so I'm gonna ask that last, but we do have the, uh, uh... There's one, okay, Seth Den, the bridge for Seth Den, not paid yet, I don't know if that's been approved.
Yep, it was paid last Thursday.
Nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred?
Uh, part of it was, cause remember when I gave, at the special meeting, I told you that the expenses were, well, I showed you the whole report, it was a million, seven fifty-five. As of last Thursday night, we paid two point five million.
That's with the temporary bridge?
Yeah.
Okay, then we have Park Road, and I have one million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to do that one. I don't think we've put anything up yet, been approved?
There was a little bit we paid for sidewalks.
Wait, has it, has the, uh, contractor been approved?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's been approved, okay, and that's the, uh, the flood, okay? Where we getting the three, one million, three sixty-two?
Um...
Seventy-five percent of that is supposed to get reimbursed, okay, before we get scared here.
I'm gonna be coming to you, um, in the next couple of weeks, number one, with that amended bond resolution for Great Oak School, when I was telling you, gotta correct the language on it.
Okay.
And, um, a four million dollar bond authorization for, um, our portion of the, uh, flood, flood damage. So, you know, a temporary borrow for a million dollars.
Temporary, hope, and hopefully we get the, get a smell of that seventy-five dollar, seventy-five percent back from FEMA.
Well, let me, here's what I wrote in my thing to the governor last week. Is there any update from the state on the possibility of temporary loans from the state to assist the municipality with financing of flood damage? Oxford has already paid out about two point five million. FEMA has yet to assign a municipal liaison, so Oxford can begin submitting expenses to FEMA. That happens at ten o'clock tomorrow morning. Uh, reimbursement is many months away, Oxford is limited in borrowing per charter to ten percent of the tax revenue. Uh, this is about four point two million dollars. We will reach the four point two million by January. So, I put, asking the state...
For a, for a single bond issue?
Right, but this is for the...
Not ten, not ten percent of, uh...
No, but this is for the flood damage, but I want the state to come up with the temporary loans.
You know, we're, at one time, we were promised, you know, that, right? A politician and promises, you know? I got my, someday I'll tell you the, my, uh, my little story on promises, okay? But the lot, the end of it is, you can't spend a promise, they're hard to spend. Um...
Then the other...
Brick Street, now, okay, Brick Street, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one twenty-five, already paid it.
Already paid it, it's been submitted to the federal government, uh...
And it's still sitting over there with your short-term borrowing?
Yes.
The two eighty-seven, so all this is going to, what I wanna do, okay? For our next meeting, is to get you a list of all our projects like this that I have, okay? Get them all together, and, uh, then you could, we could, every time someone comes with a new project, we can say, well, wait a minute, we love it, but we're, how are we gonna pay for it? Because how much, how much do you wanna put the town in debt? We have two things on the bonds, I think in two years go down, but it's not much, it's like three, three million dollars coming off our bond total, so...
Let's see, what I, what is part of that, I don't understand the whole picture, I mean, I think there needs to be a name of the project, the total cost, the town portion, current status, next steps, you know, et cetera, like, so they give a whole picture of everything that's going on.
I was gonna put the vendor on there too, that's doing the work.
Yeah.
Like it's, uh, Brennan, uh, Brennan, or it could be Griffin Brothers, or it could be, uh, Earthworks, whoever did the work on that, so we know it's...
But even though in current status, like, for example, like Jim said, he submitted to, you know, the federal government, or next steps waiting for decision from the federal government, sort of like an accounting of every project.
Well, have, have approved, in, uh, all the approved projects, and then unapproved, but Quaker Farms, it hasn't been approved, but they already, they already got the grant, now what do we do? Forget the grant, or do we pay the, it's five million dollars, and we're gonna pay two hundred and ninety thousand of it?
And the project has to be completed by a certain date for us to get the actual...
So, I mean, what do we do? What do we do? I mean, how much, how much, how much, how much do we want to say?
And a bond authorization for five million is above the ten percent of the tax levy, so we'd have to go to referendum.
Yeah.
And the problem with referendum is you gotta have, obviously, a majority of the people voting favor, we need a minimum of fifteen percent of the registered voters to show up to vote for it, otherwise it automatically fails. If you had a thousand people show up, and everybody said yes and no, but it wasn't fifteen percent, it fails.
You know, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know how that works. What we gotta have is, we have a sheet, so when our citizenry come to you and say, what the heck are you guys doing? Say, here, here's all the projects, you didn't like them, well, here they are, you know, you, some of these you voted on, okay? Uh, the last thing I got, okay, is all that LOSA stuff we put into the budget, okay? You just tell me, I know some of this approved and everything else, and I have no problem with that, okay? Uh, just tell me...
I'm trying, off the top of my head, give me a project that I can tell you.
I could, I could tell you, I, I almost, I almost could tell you pound for pound myself, okay? Just so they know. Okay, uh, center firehouse, uh, compressor, we had a hundred thousand dollars.
Done.
It's done?
Yeah.
Where'd you, where'd you get the hundred thousand?
They submitted to, uh, the LOSA.
Well, so did pay for it, at one time didn't we have a hundred?
No, I wrote, I wrote the application up as, uh, part of the, um, mechanicals within the building, uh, equivalent being a furnace and air conditioning system, et cetera.
Okay, all right. Let's start. So the roof at Riverside...
It's in the works.
It's in the works, it's approved?
It's been approved, I hope, yeah.
It's, it's a LOSA project, I got it for seventy-five thousand?
I don't remember that.
Okay, the, uh, uh, board post for the high school, twenty thousand?
That has not moved forward.
Okay, not moved, okay. Public Works Boiler, that got back in, it's, it's, it's what happened, I bet you.
I don't think that's...
I sent a, I sent a meeting there, and they, they mentioned, mentioned the, uh, Public Works Boiler, twenty thousand.
I don't remember it going.
Okay, make a note. The firefighters' pagers?
Done.
ARPA?
Yep.
That was ARPA, it didn't come through LOSA, okay? The senior center carpet?
Done.
Fifteen, I thought it was denied.
It's, it's approved.
It was denied, it was denied through LOSA.
Right, but it's going in through ARPA.
It's going through ARPA, or, ARPA, or if it didn't go ARPA, it would go through the, uh, we would have taken it from contingency.
When I met with Jeff the other day, he said it wasn't going through ARPA, I don't, I don't know.
I, I was so...
There was three, there was three things last, last meeting with ARPA, and that's the other thing is, now that they're done, Herman's got a summary of all the ARPA stuff, okay?
Well, they're not done, because they, they, they pulled the, uh, the center school.
Yeah, but they got to, they got to what, December to, uh...
Appropriate them.
Appropriate all the funds?
Yeah.
That's, next month, next month, is that, was it, December second or...
The end of December.
And the, the roof for Jackson's Cove, that was discussed, I had a hundred thousand dollars in slot.
I don't remember the source, I think some of it's coming from ARPA, some of it's coming from LOSA.
I thought at the board session, they, they said it was coming from ARPA.
That's, I don't remember which it was, but I know it was approved.
Yeah, okay.
It was broken down into two separate projects, one for the, um, the wood underneath it, and then one for, one... It was broken down into two separate projects, one for the, um, the wood underneath it, and then one for, one for the actual roof itself.
Okay, so, that's the, the four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that, they could thank the Board of Finance for getting those projects, 'cause those are projects that were linking for a long time, and we should, instead of having them cap, we put them through, 'cause we had a million dollars sitting there that loss was fine. And we got a lot of this stuff done, okay? For some house cleaning.
Yeah, we still have some of that Losa money left, that wasn't.
Oh, yeah, we have, um, do, do we gotta, how do we gotta refund, refund our Losa balance?
Just have to look it up online. All you gotta do is look it up online.
Look it up online?
Are you all set?
Yeah. Before you adjourn, the other thing I just asked the governor, last week you gave me the information on that grant when I followed up.
Yeah, you told me it's dead.
And it was not there, but I, I sent to the governor's office, the state statute, there, there is a state statute that allows municipalities to apply for grants to reimburse them for unreimbursed FEMA expenses. Uh, when I spoke to Martin Hef at OPM, he stated there's no money in the fund. What's the possibility of the state putting additional money into the fund, so that Oxford, Southbury, and the other towns affected could receive funding from it?
What'd you send it to?
What's that?
What'd you send it?
This went to, um, Mark Pouten, who's the governor. And then the last one was, the Oxford watersheds run through several towns, the same is true for Southbury and Woodbury, 'cause you got the river up there that runs through the town. We would like the DEP to take over the cleanup and the flood mitigation, so the rivers and the watersheds, this will allow, was to help out the towns. The state did this back in the nineteen nineties, uh, with the town Seymour. If the town does it on their own, be putting a burden on the towns that have not fixed the problem. As an example, if Oxford fixes Little River Watershed and Seymour does not, it'll create a bigger problem for Seymour. Uh, the same is true for, um, Southbury, if Woodbury doesn't. Um, so, seeing what we can get.
So, you know what, if you don't, if you don't ask, the answer's always no.
Right?
If you don't ask. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Need a second, her?
Second.
Okay, alright, all favor? Oh, gee, I don't have a general meeting where they say most adjournments didn't pass.